Okay. With the exception of the CSAT. So now, 3.01, I will turn the microphone over to Principal Green and the entourage.
I don't think I need a microphone if everyone can hear me. Okay, I'd like to begin by seconding the board again. This year is the opportunity to share for the next two hours. To share some of the highlights and great work that we're doing at the high school. Joining me this evening are my assistant principals, Dr. Randy Trust, Dr. James Fungus, and Mr. Billy Castelay. And I'd like to begin, as we always do, by just reflecting on our... I'm gonna have to move Clark next time? Sorry, no, you're good.
You're on the roof?
You're good. Quickly reflecting on our mission, which is, again, to graduate confident, caring students committed to achieving their full intellectual, social, creative potential, and to maintain active interest in their own personal wellness. And tonight, hopefully, you see a lot of those themes interwoven throughout the work we are doing. And there are some places, again, this is not everything we do, as you know, in CSAT, these are focus points or points that we are highlighting for this year. Just to start off with the class of 2017, a wonderful class. 370 students, we had five non-grads. I'm happy to say I'm down to two, so three have graduated since. So we're at a 99% graduation rate for the class of 2017. Notably pointing out, again, that our four-year college attendance rate is where we want it to be, over 70%, we want to get that to at least 75%. But if you recall, going back about five years, we were at around 56%. So our four-year college rate has gone up over the years. Two-year college rate is about the same, 24%. And again, just to point out, 98% of our students are continuing their education. So a good job by the class of 2017. So a lot of that work, we know our guidance department or our school counselors have a huge hand in our postgraduate plans for our students. And what I've highlighted here this evening, obviously, I've listed a lot of the work they do in terms of reaching out and communicating with families. Starting with our senior college assembly, which we started last year, where we meet with each student to make sure that the information is the same, that everybody gets the same information early in the year, so that that can be shared with families. This year, highlighted, we added a junior pre-college assembly, where we meet with the juniors and we talk about things related to the college process, right down to how to have an interview with the college representative, a very important piece when they first meet you. And again, that's based on feedback from those college admissions officers. Also, we've increased the number of college tables we have this year, invited more colleges to the school. We've been having those, probably, about a week and a half already, and continuing for the next two weeks. So we have a lot of college tables at lunch. Again, the immediate decision weeks, we are hosting again in January. So that is when the college comes in and offers immediate admission to the student after meeting with them, which is a wonderful option for some students. Last year, RCC, Sacred Heart University, SAC, Dominican, Ramaco College, and Manhattanville participated, and they are signed up to do the same as well this year. FAFSA night coming up. We have a FAFSA night for parents, and it's all about the financial aid forms. And if you've never filled one of those out, it's always good to go maybe once or twice to the FAFSA information line. And again, college panels, always available. 10th and 11th grade, where we bring in college reps to discuss the college experience, especially for first-time parents who have a child going off to college. One thing I'm most proud of, we revamped our course selection process. So you know, at the end of, well, in the spring, a little earlier, February or so, we have students start taking classes for the next year. And one of the great things we did this year was start to align student interests, post-high school student interests, to electives that we offer. And what it did was it spawned some interesting electives for this year that came about. But we've also pretty much aligned students into areas we think, or they think at this time that they want to pursue, whether that's in engineering, computer science, biology, whatever it might be. So we'll share some of those other courses that we added this year as a result of that. But one of the things we noticed as a by-product is our study halls are probably the lowest they've ever been. We have more students in classes, which is where we want them. And last but not least, we have the Spring College Fair at Suffolk High School, again, coming this year in April. So to review very quickly, just to give you a snapshot, last year, we looked at four priorities. Literacy, focusing on English Regents Exams as one of the metrics for that. Math, students demonstrate proficiency in Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II Regents. Priority III, Social/Emotional Learning and Positive Behavioral Intervention Strategies. We implemented a new program last year. And STEM, always looking to increase the options and opportunities for our students in the area of STEM education. So priority one, and I know you've seen some of these Regents results, but just to very quickly touch base on it, we have the proficiency on the English Regents exam. 95% of our students was the target, will meet or exceed proficiency on that 11th grade English Regents, and we achieved that goal at 97% meeting that proficiency level. We knew that the English Regents being new, they played with the scales a little bit, so we looked at a 95% score, even though it was 99% the prior year, we knew there would be some fluctuation there, but our students still did very well on that exam. So we're very proud with that result. Looking at Algebra I, we set a target of 93% will meet or exceed proficiency, and we met that score at 94%. And I have to say, if you can just look at the chart, it speaks for itself, where you can see the progress we've made in Algebra I. Algebra I is so important because it is a requirement for your diploma, so you must pass that course. And we're seeing a great jump in that area for Algebra I. So kudos to the math department, they did a great job last year. In the area of geometry, we set a target for 85%. We fell short at 78%, but I just want to point out that where some gains met, 7% increase in overall mastery, as students who scored 85 or better. And we decreased the number of students who did not pass the exam by 2%. 78% of our students did pass that exam. That might have been one of the worst Regents exams in history, with four changes coming to us after the exams were graded. So for me, I think, a very unfair assessment for students, but let the Regents deal with that. So we'll see what happens this year, hoping it's a lot more, a lot more fair to the students. And Algebra II TRAD, just another area where we're seeing great results from math department or math instruction. Going back to 1516, that was the older Regents, I'll call it the older Regents, the pre-common core Regents. Always very challenging, we adopted and dove right into the common core curriculum, and our teachers have made gains, steady gains, since 1516. Last year, doing very well, with a 14% increase in mastery, and again, reducing the number of students who did not pass that exam. So again, great work on the math end. Priority III, Social/Emotional. So last year, I mentioned to you, around the same time of year, that we were going to implement this program called Student Success Skills. And this was a program designed to impart strategies, and I guess created more of a growth mindset among our ninth graders, but also provide some support in the area of, I guess, things like test anxiety and overall social/emotional health for the students, especially as they come into high school. So we implemented this program, we did it with the English teachers, combined with all the guidance counselors and all of our clinicians. It was a great team effort, we pushed into English classrooms about seven lessons. And at the end of the day, we surveyed our students roughly, you know, two months after the lesson, and we found that 58% of our students were still using or utilizing the strategies they learned during those workshop classes, which, for me, going back, that's a good number. Normally, it's, what were you guys talking about? So, you know, close to 60% is good. And we looked at, again, getting that feedback, okay, where can we do this better? What would resonate even more with you? And so I asked them for some anecdotal information, and overwhelmingly, they know what they need. They want more sleep, they want more time, they want more strategies, less stress, so things like that. And so we're designing this year a lot more of that feedback into the program to, again, help meet their needs a little bit more, and focus on some of those areas that they identify. So we're looking forward to that work, our clinicians are excited about it.
They want homework?
Sorry?
They want homework?
That homework stresses them out. So, but those again, it's a good feedback. Time management?
Time management.
Yep. In-school suspensions. So last year, if you recall, we had a bump, a rather large bump in suspensions. This year, I'm happy to say, that bump is way down, and it's the lowest we've had in the last five years. So last year, we reduced by 30%. Again, tremendous drop in in-school suspensions. On the back of that, we have out-of-school suspensions. We had 24% decrease, again, the lowest we've had in the past five years, which is great, and speaks to the pride of the building and our students, and Dr. Trust. In the area of STEAM, we looked at implementing a new AP course. It was called AP Computer Science Principles, and we said 8% of our students will score 3 or better on that exam, and our results were great. 100% of our students scored 3 or better on that exam, so about 17 students. And we're very proud of the work they did. So we are continuing with AP Computer Science Principles for next year, and for the first time, we'll also be able to offer the Comp Science A, which follows the Computer Science Principles course for those that want to dive more in-depth into the coding and programming aspect of computer science. And we'll get back to, for this year, some goals in that area. So for this year, again, we're continuing our focus on literacy, again, maintaining that robust result in the English Regents. We also know we have new social studies exams coming online that are very similar to the English Regents exam, so that'll parlay and be more interdisciplinary in nature, work for the literacy areas. So we'll expect that at the end of this year, there'll be a new social studies global exam, but it looks a lot like the English Regents exam, so we're very positive about that. Priority II, in math, again, focusing on raising those scores in Algebra I, Geometry, as well, for those Regents. Priority III, the Social/Emotional Learning piece. Some new pieces I'll talk about in a second, but along with cultivating and refining that Student Success Program to maximize the results there. And priority IV, in STEAM, we want to put in a broader elective, even more, so to speak, electives in the computer sciences, but outside of AP and college level. This would be more of a class designed around engaging students that may not know a lot about computer science in the area of maybe a path development and things like that. We'll talk a little bit more about what that would hopefully look like. So we're setting targets of 97% of students for the English Regents, 95% for Algebra I, and 80% for the Geometry Regents for next year. 92% is our target for the Algebra II. And I want to point out in mathematics, at the end of this year, will be the first year our ENL students who have been in our two-year program will be taking their first Regents exam. And they'll be taking the Regents in math, and algebra, in biology, and global. So those are areas of focus for us, within the focus for those students. In PBIS, again, implementing our Student Success Program, and implementing a DVT program with the therapeutic support classes. And we're looking at attendance to reduce frequent, which we mean by 10 or more days, and chronic 18 or more days absenteeism by about 5% respectively. In STEAM, again, as I mentioned earlier, increasing the participation and offerings outside of the Advanced Placement Program. And again, just to make it more reachable for some students who may be interested, but may not necessarily want to take an AP course to find out about it. So we're excited about that. For programmatic areas, this year, we've revised the inclusion support courses to offer more skills and strategy support. And I just want to make the connection going back to what the feedback was from some of our students, where they do need that support, they want that support. If you look at that, we also have added, which provides a layer of support in developing skills and strategies for academic success and college readiness. It goes beyond just, you know, knowing how to take notes. So looking down now at the ENL program on the third bullet, we have 22 students, again, coming up to take the Algebra, Living Environment, Global Studies. So the focus is in, is that area providing an extra support for those students. So how to do that, obviously, we continue to align and refine our curriculum maps, which need updating, as it is coming out with even newer standards beyond the common core, replacing the common core. So we'll be looking to make sure we're aligned with that work. Achieve 3000, just actually had a training today of all the ninth-grade English teachers. We'll be running that out through our freshman writing seminar program, and pushing the idea of importance of reading comprehension for all ninth graders to get a good baseline on where students are, so we can implement appropriate interventions for their not being successful. And again, continuing ENL support. Remember, our students that are in the two-year ENL program are with teachers that have been very well-trained. And now we're starting to train teachers sort of in the mainstream, so that these students are successful no matter where they go. So that work is happening as well this year. In terms of math, emphasizing Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II mastery levels. We're doing an item analysis of our past Regents exams, looking at standards. Where are we weak, where are we strong, continuing to do that. And of course, measuring that against some quarterly common assessments to identify that before someone sits for a Regents exam, and we can, again, offer the right intervention. PBIS, continued recognition, again, 95 is strong at the high school. We continue to engage and recognize students for their achievement and citizenship. Peers and cool kids, I think we had the highest interest level ever this year. Students want to be leaders, they want to help, and we're really trying to capitalize upon that between our peer leadership program and peers and cool kids. There's quite a few, there's over 200 students involved in those programs. So again, refining and working with those students is very important, and has a tremendous impact. As we know, students are more impressionable to their peers than their parents, unfortunately, but we want to make sure that that's accurate and they've been working well. Assemblies, we have a Save a Life tour for 11 of the 12th graders coming up in November. And we'll talk about that maybe a little bit more of it. Save a Life is started as a passion project for one of our students to bring awareness to distracted driving to peers. So we're excited to have Save a Life, which is an all-day event for those students that bring the simulators and really try to show the impact of what distracted driving is all about. And again, we're continuing our very successful and unifying theme of We Are Suffolk, celebrating all our history, our diversity, our cultures, our talents. We're kicking off, obviously, next week, we have Spirit Week. We are Suffolk Cultural Expo, scheduled for the winter months. That's an ongoing, it's about a six-week event. And we're continuing to bring in our new students. I'm happy to say we had 70 new registrants as of today, new students to the high schools. So integrating and making them feel part of our community is very important, especially at the high school level, especially if they're coming from somewhere nearby, but they still have roots, we really want them to feel connected to the high school. In the area of Social/Emotional Learning, again, continuing our, and again, this slide, identify some of the specific areas that are targeted in the Student Success Skills Program. Again, the goal setting, creating care and support in classroom communities with the teachers, performing under pressure, helping students manage test anxiety, all those things. And building healthy optimism, trying to create an optimistic student is very important. Directive behavioral therapy, we're working again with our therapeutic support program. And this is a local work between the clinician and the teacher to continue the work that starts in a clinical session right into the classroom. So it's building bridges, so that there's continuity between the interventions provided to students. Just a branch slide, so we know our APs were very good last year, 89%. Again, the best in the past five years. Our enrollment is a little lower, because I think we're offering a lot more, and we have a lot more students looking at college courses versus AP courses. What do I take? And that's a good problem to add, right? So some students know where they're going, they know what they need. And so it was also slightly smaller class. But again, great results nonetheless for our class of 2017. As we compare to New York State and global community, we're doing pretty well in our AP scores. Have to say Cambridge International, you don't hear a lot about Cambridge, sorry, Jim. But Cambridge, our students did the best they ever did this past year. We had about, how many things? Yeah, 50% of the students in the Cambridge score at the top, the highest level. That's an international score, so compared to everyone in the world, they were at the top, so. And I just want to point out, we made a case study published by Cambridge International this year, which is an international publication, so it's around the world. That's why it's international. Sorry, it's being retitled. But we're just proud of it, because it's showcasing our students in video as well, and some of our staff related to the global perspective program, perspectives program at Suffolk High School. So there's a link at that, if you go to cambridgeinternational.org, it's under the teaching and learning link, so you can take a look at some Suffolk folk. College credit courses, again, very proud of the opportunities we offer students as they leave us, but also think beyond high school. Again, our goal being everyone to have a college experience before they leave Suffolk High School through an AP course or a college course. We're happy to say that we added, finally, because a foreign English teacher went back, it took this long, but we now have English college credit courses at Suffolk High School. Approximately, how many students?
100.
About 100 students enrolled in that, so by far one of the largest. And longer due, so we're very proud that that's up and running. And just, you know, in a snapshot, our students are earning, right now, 3,500 college credits. So anyone that's paid for one college credit knows that that's a significant amount of money. And it does help our students gain an edge, or even time served in college, where they can start off as a second semester freshman, or even a sophomore, we had cases of that. So again, very proud of that, and thank you for supporting that and our staffing, that's very needed for that program to work. In STEAM, again, just an overall snapshot of our STEAM experience at Suffolk High School. We're maintaining our Project Lead the Way program. We now have the two full AP Computer Science courses, principles, sorry, AP Computer Principles and Computer Science A running currently. We've added a cinematography course, we brought back some of the digital media courses that, again, offer another outlet of creativity for the students. We're very happy with the Human Anatomy elective. Again, going back to what I said earlier about students taking courses, we found a lot of our students are very interested in becoming physical therapists, doctors. There's so many areas where just even one course, or one quality course in Human Anatomy can give them an edge, and at least allow them to explore that area a little bit more before they go to college and commit to a full load of courses in that area. Forensic science, again, at college level. STUR, again, it's very strong, we're getting students enrolled in STUR Cambridge, which allows students to explore any topic of interest, from the scientific topic to a little large topic. And again, our robotics team on the extracurricular end, always engaging and competitive. So the other area of focus we've had is student-driven learning, and we've really reached out to our students to take control of some of their own experiences. We achieved that through the 20% time initiative last year. We had about five or six teachers really dive in, work with students to explore areas of their own choosing. And we envisioned it as, starting off with a 20% experience, maybe as a junior, sophomore, junior, and then working your way up to a full-blown, immersive experience through WISE, where we think they can take the information they learn during that 20% time program and really do something phenomenal as a senior, and give them the time to do that. I've always believed senior years should look a little bit different than the rest of your years. We should empower them a little bit more, and we think this is the start of something that I hope to grow and expand over the next couple of years. But again, it's that whole idea of having them choose the topic, research the topic, and dive right in, I think it's very powerful, and so far, very successful. One change we added to help students was we were able to allow the WISE course to meet the English graduation requirement, which means they don't have to take it in addition to many other things, and it gives them that space I was just talking about. So it's a great opportunity for seniors to really explore topics of their own. On the horizon, we're still dabbing around in spaces. We're being very deliberate about the spaces we put into the high school, knowing that unlike an elementary school, nobody owns their own room. So we have to make sure our spaces are able to be utilized by multiple teachers, multiple disciplines, sometimes, but we're having success. LoT, World Language Department, jumped up this year, and they designed this space. Picture, that's exactly what it looks like. That will be probably put in in the next two weeks, two to three weeks when it arrives. But again, our goal is to break up those rows and encourage conversation and real learning of the language. You have to use the language to learn the language, and that's a good space we'll enable the teachers to do. So it looks a little more like a Starbucks, but I guess that should be helpful. Programming, going back to that computer elective, we want to put in Android or Apple app design experiences for students, and make those more interdisciplinary, meaning grab people from the art world to help them design, grab people from computer science, help them code, and come up with something, and understand how that process works. And we think we'll have a lot of interest in that area based on some feedback from students. Flipgrid, virtual reality, Google Expeditions, those are terms we're throwing at you. Again, those are other experiences that we're engaging with students, which involve partnerships with other schools, video conversations, and you know, this big buzz around virtual reality, and we're going to dabble into that a little bit more as well. So that is a very quick overview of Suffolk High School. Any questions?
Nice work.
Okay.
That's impressive. Really, and how you did your job on this.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions?
Oh, sorry.
So just elaborating a little on our ENL classes, where we had a two-year program for these students, and then, understanding if I understand correctly, then they're assimilated through the regular classroom. For the two years, they were not with the regular students, or was that part of their day?
They were in the core areas, the core disciplines, so English, Biology, Math, Social Studies. They ran together and worked in those courses. Electives, no, they were out.
They were discouraged.
Right. And the goal from the beginning was knowing that these students, again, were to gain the proficiency level, so that they could be successful in the mainstream courses. So that's looking like it's going to happen, and it's, you know, the results are very good in terms of their experiences and their growth from one year to the other. Even on the nicest slide assessments, a lot of them have gone from mentoring to transitioning, which is a really good sign.
So those were students that did not come through our system up to that level? They were new to the?
They came to us, they won, yeah.
Right, new to the district?
Yes.
Okay. And so our expectations for our score levels for goals for next year include those students now assimilated and attuned?
Correct.
I understand correctly, okay. So now, do we have a new tool that's coming into that program this year?
Not as high, certainly nowhere near as high, maybe I'd say half the amount. So maybe where we're at, we were at 22, we're probably at 10 or 11 right now. And so the good thing, and we've always known with our ENL program, it has to move, it has to be fluid, and it has to be modified.
Adaptable.
Yes, definitely adaptable. So some of the resources we have in the two-year program, we might be moving elsewhere, you know, to support students in different areas. So whether that's a pro teach or whatever.
That's awesome. And you've had a general success with that program, that format is working out, and you want to continue with it exactly as?
People are jealous of us. And I've been told by the Harvard, that no one has what we had, and people are coming around to see it. So yeah, I'm very happy with it, the teachers are happy with it, the students are happy with it, and that's, to me, the most important.
So it was a successful pilot, and we want to just continue that?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Okay, I'd like to attend the students' project about Save a Life tour. Do you have the date of the topic?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Okay, I'd like to attend the students' project about Save the Life tour, do you have the date off the top?
So that was in November, October twenty-third.
October twenty-third, okay, so I'll email it if I have a good time. And seventy new students are not only to the district, you're including our freshmen moving up as well, right?
No, these are new students to the district.
Seventy brand-new students?
Seventy, seven-year-old, as of today, I'm gonna check this one.
That's actually awesome, we haven't, we haven't actually shared that figure before.
Yes.
So seventy totally new to the district came into Suffolk High this year?
Correct.
That's wonderful. Okay, and where's the majority from?
Majority is from Eastern Europe. I think the exact number accounted today was twenty-two, so that's the largest single group.
And last year, what, how many?
We always pick up about forty students, forty to forty-five, that's been the range. This is a little higher than the past, but they're all, they're all wonderful students, they're, you know, I think people know what we have here, and they want to come here, so.
That's awesome. And, any last? If we can please post about this Cambridge score, if we can put that in a Facebook post or something about that project that, you know, where our students had a shout-out, that'd be great publicity.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
This is all.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
No, and, you know, again, this is a small, very brief overview of the CCF, it's luminous, and there's a lot that goes, you know, into each of these categories, so it's not this single. But I have to say, I did, I had a conversation with one of the top students from last year at a dinner, and I asked him, I said, what is the best and worst thing, of course, I had to go there, about Suffolk High School, and he said the worst thing about Suffolk High School was there, there was not enough time to take all the classes that we offer. And I was like, that should be a?
That's a good problem.
Yes, that was a great problem, so. That being said, thank you very much, we all appreciate you presenting that every year.
Okay, so no further questions, so public participation, public participation is the eddy school district business, this session will last thirty minutes. If you have a comment with respect to any school district business, please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, address your comments to the Board of Education, and just with respect to policy twelve thirty, fourteen hundred, thirty-two forty, please do not make any specific comments with respect to any student or employee in the district.
My name is Andrew Dale, from Representative at home, Carter Elementary School. It's not as positive as the high school, and I'm sorry, gentlemen, but when a child is told fat, hey, you're fat, hey, those glasses make your eyes look big, those, I think we all agree, I mean, possibly bullying, according to policies. When a child's told to commit suicide and told how to do it, we don't consider that bullying? I think there's a real problem. Your policy zero-one-one-five of the DASSA also states otherwise, that it is in fact an issue, okay, and is covered under that section. There's only three explanations I can actually think of, one is that maybe people don't know the policies, two is maybe they don't want to report it, because it then goes to the state, or three is just personal, and I would hope that that's not the case. Every job description, from the superintendent to the deputy superintendent, to every board member here, all the way down, the first portion of their job description, first thing says that you're going to create a safe school environment. So if that's the first thing, I'm asking that everybody takes that extremely seriously and starts doing it. There's an old expression called watch the feet, which basically means, you're watching your feet, you know that, you can actually see if there's action being taken. You're watching somebody's feet, you know that they're moving, you know that they're doing something, otherwise, it's just words. And with that, basically, I'm gonna just leave in this, you know, I, I hope it's not just words, and I hope that this is a little bit more, that the school district is a little bit more than just changing their name, that we actually live up to the reputation of being the premier school district that we all claim to be, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comment? And again, we will comment back, just as always, I think everybody remembers, we do not comment back, but anybody else have a comment? Any school district business? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Chairman, Superintendent's comments?
None.
Chairman Tatum motion to adjourn?
Before adjournment, I would like to repeat something I requested by email, that was tabled for future meetings, I requested discussion or information about the water testing, that was recently done, whether it included phosphates or not, and we're gonna, we'll get that in a future meeting, I just wanted to, you know, include that.
I did send you an email, I think this?
That it will be tabled, yeah.
Yeah, I sent you, I sent you an email.
And also, the second item was how we're going to be testing the pool water at the Suffolk High School as an ongoing safety testing for the water, who's going to be doing it, and what the cost will be, so these were two of the tabled items that?
Right, and again, I did respond to your email, I sent the information.
I just wanted to ensure we cover those in future meetings. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Chairman Tatum motion to adjourn?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, second. Thank you. All of the favors seen in favor saying aye. Aye, thank you. Thank you.
Very well done.
I have no left.
Make it a play.
They are playing.
I can do a little set of the Alabama's, you win.
Oh, Angela, Angela.
They're coming to cherry.